All right, it looks like we are live. And I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council on April 20th, 2020. This is anything but a regular meeting as we're trying out going virtual this go around. What I'd like to do a little bit unusual from other meetings is have the city clerk go ahead and call roll Madam City Clerk Treasure.
Councilmember Holt.
President.
Councilmember Vaprazan. Councilmember Vaprazan.
Here.
Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Saunders.
Here.
Councilmember Mosley.
I'm here.
All councilmembers present.
I'm here too.
I said tyranny.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Thought you said yet.
I can visually see Councilmember Tierney, Mosley, Williams, Gardner, Holt, Scott, Vaprazan, and Saunders. And of course, I also see the city attorney and the city clerk treasure. So with that, we will move on to invocation and pledge of allegiance. I've asked Councilmember Williams if she'd like to lead the invocation.
Yes, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for all your blessings. You are so good to us. Even though we're living in a very scary time in our world's history, we know that you are faithful. I pray for those in our community who are not only sick, but those who are afraid. Be our peace and be our comforter. I pray that as we gather tonight in these uncharted technology waters, you will lead and guide us in our city's business, and your will be done in all we say and do. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Little, little abnormal. We're not going to win any awards for that, but it was there nonetheless. And for
Music video.
Exactly. So again, thank you for that. Special guests and announcements. We don't have any, y'all should have received a copy of the April 6th regular meeting of the city council. Was there any discussion or debate on that?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We had a motion from Councilmember Vaprazan and a second from Councilmember Tierney to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're also going to do a roll call vote for every vote here. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
And Councilmember Mosley.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Motion carries. Did we receive any, well, so the pursuant to ordinance 1,000, any public comments that we received will be read on those agenda items. Just for clarity sake, Madam City Clerk, did we receive any public comments?
No, no public comment cards were received.
Thank you. So with this, we're going to go ahead and move on to the financial statement review. Let me get Ms. Vega in here. Ms. Vega, the floor is yours. I show that your mic is muted still.
Hey, hello, everybody.
Greetings.
I think you need to let me share my screen. Okay.
You should be able to if you just click the center button there.
Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, these are the March. Oops, wrong screen. Right.
We can see the city of Mammell, March 2009, monthly financials.
Yeah, look at that year.
Twenty nineteen.
It's not the right one.
It's okay. It was a good month.
It's twenty twenty in the packet, though, Shannon.
Yes, it is.
Well, I guess we're all going to get to see. Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the fund balance from March 31st, 2020, the capital improvement fund was flat to budget, which means it's fully funded. Capital, police and fire fund, there were no transfers into the general fund. It's still sitting and police and fire fund. The sanitation fund is eighteen percent. The group fund is ninety percent to budget. The general fund is eighty-nine percent to budget, and we have $2.4 million more than ordinance 438 requirements. The general fund revenue as a whole was up thirteen percent to prior year. County mileage was up one percent. Franchise fees are up four percent. State turnback is flat to prior year. County sales tax is up eight percent. City self taxes up thirty percent, and fire and police is up thirty percent. So at this time, I'll talk about what's going on with the sales tax. I got a call from the DFA, and there has been an audit and local cap rebate, which results in a reduction of $364,200 that will have to be repaid. We didn't do anything wrong. It's just audits. They paid into the wrong cities. And I'm not sure of what this look back period is. I haven't been able to get in touch with them to find out that look back period. But I'll update you when I know.
What was the dollar figure of that again?
Um, $364,200, just a little more. We are going to be repaying that in installments through the end of the year, and that amount is $40,767 a month.
Wow.
Hey, Shannon, is this, I know our sales tax was up significantly the first couple of months of the year. Is this a recent discovery, or was it from previous months, maybe in 2019?
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, they, by the way, when we're streaming the screen like this, I can't get a good look at all the council members. So if you've got your hand raised, I can't see it at the moment. But this, I just found out about this late this afternoon, and we are trying to find what the look back on that is to see if it was due to recent increases in revenue, or if it was a longer term issue. But either way, not the sort of news that we wanted to hear. So. But are there any additional questions or discussion on the financials?
I have a couple. I'd like to ask the status of the 2018 audit. I guess that's the one that we're doing now.
Yes, sir, it is. With all this COVID-19 stuff going on, we're still wrapping up getting ready for that. But we expect that to be moving forward within the next month.
Okay, so the auditors haven't been in yet on 2018?
No, sir.
All right. How are the bank reconciliations? What's the status on those?
Those are. There's only two months left on the investment account. Everything else has been reconciled, and we're preparing at the same time for the 2019.
Okay, so you're saying there's still a couple of months left to be reconciled for 2018? Is that correct?
Yes.
I kind of thought maybe we'd be caught up all the way through 2019 by now.
And so did I. We're working very hard.
That's all the questions I've got right now.
Ms. Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I was wondering if we have seen the impact of all of the business closures to this point, or is this, is it too soon?
It's too soon.
We ex.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, we expect the March sales tax revenue to come to us mid next month, so five week or three weeks or so. Is that about right?
Well, we're waiting on March. It should be here around the 25th. And that's when we usually get our sales tax money around the 25th of the month.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no additional, if there's no additional discussion, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financial statement.
I'll move.
I'll move.
I believe I had a motion from Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
And a second from Councilmember Williams.
Right.
Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, if we could please do a roll call vote again.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I also believe Ms. Vega had an announcement to make.
Yes, I do. I'm moving to Colorado.
What?
Oh, no.
Yes. It's come on very suddenly. I've given the mayor up to twelve weeks notice. My house is just going on the market Thursday. My husband is already there. We already have an appointment. But I'm not rushing to leave the mayor high and dry. My house sells. I've still got family where I can stay with. But we're, we're moving.
Sorry to lose you.
Well, thank you for your service. And we just, I got that news today as well. And so we will be looking to fill that position and hopefully have Ms. Vega here still to help train a replacement for a little while, but but time will tell on that. So if there's no further discussion about that, then we can move on. Thank you, Ms. Vega. So with that, the next order is, or the next item is I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
Second.
And a motion from Councilmember Vaprazan and a second from Councilmember Tierney. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to unfinished business and the third reading of ordinance 996, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
It enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 996, and ordinance affirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage, the revised preliminary plat for the development known as the M at White Oak Crossing, upon fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
So this is now on third reading. Was there any discussion on that ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 996.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gardner and a second from Councilmember Williams, adopting ordinance 996. Is there any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the third reading of ordinance 997, amending the Mammell land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
It enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 997, and ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and that and for other purposes.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 997?
Motion to approve ordinance 997.
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Okay, we do, Councilmember Mosley, first of all, we do have a motion from Councilmember
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Saunders. And so with that, Councilmember Mosley, we do have a representative of the applicant, Mr. Mark Redder here, who could answer some questions, as well as Mr. Grummer, representing planning and zoning.
Okay, yeah, I would be very interested in what it is that the applicant or the person that they'll be selling the land to is intending to do with the property. I wonder if Mr. Redder or somebody could elaborate on that.
I have added Mr. Redder and Mr. Grummer as panelists to this meeting. Mr. Redder, your mic is muted right now. I'll go ahead and unmute you. Perhaps if you could just state your name and address.
Mark Redder, and I live in Clinton, Arkansas.
Great. And so I believe Councilmember Mosley had a question as to what was planned to be on that property?
Well, and honestly, we don't know. It would be market driven, and it could be any of the items available in the C3 zoning. Of course, given lot size, some of the items just wouldn't be logistically possible. For example, it'd be hard to put many storage on such a small lot and have it be profitable, likewise a lot of the other potential items that are allowed in the C3 use just wouldn't, wouldn't be logistically possible or financially viable. Some of the other uses, obviously, we think would be very beneficial to the community. And, you know, the thing that we need to understand is that all of the, and I'm sure you do, but all of the uses, no matter what they are, would have to comply to the setback requirements and to the building code. So they wouldn't be able to put it in a metal building, for example, or anything along those lines. It would still have to comply with all Mammell rules and regs.
Okay, so they don't want to give a hint. Do we know the name of the person that owns it and that may be buying it?
Well, yes, his name's Singh. And from the best that we can tell, is he more of an investor than anything. But he has suggested that it might be some kind of strip mall type of thing, you know, something along those lines with some leased spaces and that kind of thing.
Okay. Mr. Grummer, could that land be used for, say, a salvage yard or an open air market?
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. So as far as a salvage open air yard, it can be used for like an auto, auto sales and used place as far as salvage yard, the that is not specifically spelled out in our ordinance. So you'd have to be a little bit more specific.
Okay, okay. All right. I guess that's all the questions I've got. I'm going to be a no vote. I would like to kind of know what the intent is on that. I do think it's good that it's a commercial, that somebody would want to put in a commercial, because I think that's appropriate. I have not heard from any of the residents around there. I heard something originally, but I have not heard any follow up comments. And I'm assuming there's no comments from residents tonight to go into the discussion.
Planning and zoning has not received any comments since this went to planning commission, which we had five comments. And I believe it was two for, two against, and one that was indifferent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Outstanding. So we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 997. Was there any further discussion in that?
Mayor, I would like to just read the guidelines for a decision on a land use amendment, if I could, before we vote.
Okay.
Okay. All right. These are from section 54-79. The first guideline to be considered is other changes that have occurred in the neighborhood since the land use plan was adopted or the latest amendment was enacted. Number two, whether these changes resulted in a change to the neighborhood's character sufficiently to justify the proposed land use plan change. Three, issues and concerns raised by the neighborhood when submitted with sufficient specificity to enable the commission or city council to respond to the issues. And four, other substantial or technical evidence that any proponent or opponent of the proposed change submits. That's all.
Thank you very much. Was there any other discussion on that matter? Seeing what I think appears to be none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan. Councilmember Vaprazan.
Your mic's muted.
Councilmember Vaprazan, your mic is muted.
No. Again, yes.
He said. I can't accept that as a vote.
Come back to Councilmember Vaprazan. Councilmember Tierney.
Yes, hang on. I heard Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yeah, not muted.
You said, you're not, you're not muted. I hear you now.
Okay. Yes.
You're okay. I'll start over with the roll call vote. Councilmember Holt, one more time.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
I'm going to say no.
The motion passed. One no vote.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, what I am doing if on occasion is if I'm hearing background noise from your mic, I'm muting it. I'll try and unmute it, but just double check that it has been unmuted. Next up is ordinance 998, amending the Mammell zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 998, and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Outstanding.
Second.
I believe I had a motion from Councilmember Vaprazan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And a second from Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, sir.
To approve ordinance 998. Was there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
No.
The motion's passed seven to one, one no vote.
Thank you. I'm not sure for anyone who missed it. We did get a cameo from former chief of police Sam Williams there in the background. Then we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the third reading of ordinance 995, providing for internet auctions. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted in ordinance of the city council of the city of Mammell County, Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled or number 995, and ordinance amending chapter two of the Mammell city code, permit the sale of personal property owned by the city by internet auction, disposed by other methods permitted by state law.
Motion to approve ordinance 995. Second.
We had a motion to approve ordinance 995 from Councilmember Gardner and a second from Councilmember Tierney, I believe.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on that? Seeing what appears to be none, Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please give a roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. And for those viewers, we have approximately 30 people viewing live on Facebook. All three of these issues have been read now at three different meetings. So we've discussed them quite a bit recently. But with that, what we will do is move on to new business. The first item in new business is resolution 2020-9, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell County, of Plaski, state of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2020-9, a resolution to amend the 2020 general fund budget.
So just a brief overview of this, and while I'm doing that, I'll move chief. So just a brief overview of this, and while I'm doing that, I'll move Chief Pickard in, in case he wants to talk here in a minute. So basically, a little while back, the city council approved allowing the police department to lease vehicles instead of purchase them. As Councilmember Scott astutely noted, that would mean that we ought to be moving the money from the capital improvement CIP line item up to the operational expenses. As the council is aware, the authority granted to my office is to spend the monies within that subcategory. So we can't use operational money for, or CIP money for operations absent a budget resolution. So that's what this is. This isn't appropriating any more money than has already been there. We're just moving it from one part of the police department's budget to another part.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-nine from Councilmember Vapurzian, and I believe a second from Councilmember Williams.
Right. And Tierney also. Did I hear a second from Tierney?
Yeah, I did. But I mean, you can give it to me.
Just making sure I didn't hear that incorrectly.
Okay, so are there any questions or further debate on this matter? Or I believe Chief Pickard said that he was available to answer any questions if needed. Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I absolutely think this is the right thing to do. I think it's a priser use of our money. My only concern is, you know, every year we use revenue that expenses and it's been traditional in the last few years that we take a certain amount of capital out of the general fund. I was never a hundred percent clear this year on how much was taken out of the fund to cover capital. And since this is hitting the operating budget and revenues are down, what, we're not moving general, I mean, reserve money into an operating expense, are we?
No, so we do have the capital improvement fund, which is the money that the city council set aside. I believe primarily this year was for fire apparatus, and so that's in a separate fund. This money's all money that has been appropriated from the general fund to the police department, but under CIP, you know, the capital expense line, but because we're leasing instead of purchasing vehicles, it's that money that's already there. So it's not, it's not touching the capital improvement funds that were set aside.
I meant reserve, you know. Like last year, we took so many tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the reserve to cover and balance the budget because we didn't really have enough revenue to cover everything that we were doing, capital and expense. And so I'm hoping that this is not money that was coming out of the reserve to fund the balanced budget. You see what I'm saying? It's not new money. I mean, I know that it was money that was approved and money that's being spent, but like I said, some of the capital used to come out of reserve because we didn't have revenues to cover all of the expenses of the city and.
Well, I was checking to see if Ms. Vega was on, but she's off our, off the call already. So the, the way the reserve funds are put into the budget, the appropriation from fund balance hits and shows as a revenue to the general fund, and it isn't necessarily allocated to personnel costs, operational costs, or capital costs. So I don't know how to directly answer that question as to whether this particular money was part of that appropriation from fund balance. I suppose if you wanted to make an argument, it was, you could. And if you wanted to make an argument, it wasn't, you could also. Just because that, that appropriation from fund balance hits as a revenue, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Kinda, no.
Okay.
But, you know, as long as, I think as long as our financial people are comfortable with this increased operating expense, because operating expense traditionally is a recurring cost and capital is a one-time cost. So what we're doing is we're removing the money this year and then next year we're going to have to, you know, account that as a, as an expense again. And like I said, I really believe this is the right thing to do. It's just the time sort of unfortunate.
Yeah. I, I see your point, which is why I brought forward resolution twenty twenty-five to let, to make sure everyone was okay with that sort of multi-year lease agreement. But yeah, that point well taken, Councilmember Scott. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a quick comment, is I understand that the only reason we're having to even do a a resolution to amend this is because we've got the three categories. We've got personnel, we've got operating, and we've got capital. And this was originally budgeted for capital and we're just moving it over to operating. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I got.
Is there any further discussion on resolution twenty twenty-nine? I don't believe I see any, and we should have a motion and second already. Is that right, Madam City Clerk? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Holt.
No.
Councilmember Vapurzian.
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders.
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Mosley. You're muted, Councilmember.
I've only muted. Yes.
Yes. The motion passed to seven to one, one no vote.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is resolution twenty twenty-ten, amending the twenty twenty general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, a resolution entitled resolution number twenty twenty-ten, a resolution to amend the twenty twenty general fund budget.
So this is the second net neutral budget resolution. The city council appropriated some funds for a splash pad. And what was supposed to happen is some, some nonprofits and charities were donating money. They were supposed to write those checks out to the nonprofit. Instead, they wrote it out to the city of Mammell, so we received a fifty thousand dollar donation for the splash pad. And so this resolution shows that fifty thousand dollar donation as a revenue. And then we're asking that the council then appropriate that money toward the purpose that it was donated, which is for the splash pad expense.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-ten.
Second. I've got a question.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Vapurzian and a second from Councilmember Tierney to approve resolution twenty twenty-ten. Yes, sir, Mr. Mosley.
Okay, so this splash pad here, I, have we, has the council seen any plans for this splash pad yet? Do we know the plans and do we, do we know how much this is going to cost on an annual basis?
For the upkeep? I don't have that information with me here. The plans in their rough form have been on display in the Parks and Rec Department in various other locations for a couple of years now. And I haven't seen the final, final plans, which are the, they had the conceptual out there. I believe the city attorney has seen the contract and we're working through some of the details on that.
What is going to be the cost of this thing at this point?
I haven't, I haven't seen it at this point. At this point, what the, the amount that it is expected to cost the city is the seventy-five thousand dollars that was appropriated during the budget session. And perhaps Councilmember Gardner, who's been active on the splash pad committee, has more up-to-date information on that.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mosley, to answer your question, they have finished a design and have passed that along to Mr. Rayburn over in Parks and Rec, and that included all of the elements that would go along with the splash pad. And I know he's been working with city attorney cribs as well as code enforcement and planning to make sure that we check off all of the things that need to be checked off, since it is technically a building project. So they're working through all those steps to make sure that it, it, you know, meets city code and everything. In terms of what the cost will be, let me give you a breakdown. And I spoke with Director Rayburn today to confirm this. So as the mayor just mentioned, the city has allocated seventy-five thousand, and that will be the total expense from the city. And then we have raised, as of today, one hundred and one thousand and two hundred and nineteen dollars to go along with that. So that puts the total funds, including the city's contribution, at about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And so as the mayor mentioned, that fifty thousand dollar donation was supposed to go to a nonprofit. That was then going to make the donation and pay for it, but instead they sent it to, made payable to the city of Mammell. So that's why we have a budget resolution coming forward right now to appropriate this money. And then what you can likely expect, well, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, city attorney cribs may want to weigh in on this. We, there is an additional, as I mentioned, fifty-one thousand that has been raised, sitting in the nonprofit account. And I'm not sure from a legal perspective if that nonprofit needs to also donate that money to the city or if they can just pay the cost of the splash pad for us. I'm not sure what would be the cleanest method for that. So that's where we are. So Director Rayburn has received a copy of the contract, and that's been reviewed. And that's, that's kind of where we are. It's going through the city processes, the planning and zoning right now.
When, when is this thing going to be built?
We had really hoped to have a groundbreaking and, and kind of an unveiling around the Fourth of July. That said, that was back in February when we were hoping for that. Things have changed in the world since then. So at this point, I couldn't give you an estimate of when it's going to be built. But it, it, we're in the workflow to have it done, but we just really wanted to have a kickoff and a grand opening around the Fourth of July. And COVID nineteen kind of put a wrinkle in that. So I couldn't give you an exact timeline.
Okay, I, I'm going to, that because of the unusual way that this ended up in the budget and, and there's, there's it just continues to be unusual. The numbers don't seem to be nailed down. I had, we haven't been presented with dollars and cents or a design or, or costs of maintaining it. I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote no until we get some of that information. I know, I know the seventy-five's in the budget, but I, I'm just, I'd like, I'd like to not rush forward here until we see more on this project.
I would add, if you want more information, please contact Director Rayburn. He has all of that. So he could get that to you.
And I have reviewed the contract. I don't, I reviewed it and I believe passed it on to Ms. Vega. So I don't have it with me tonight, but it's, the plans are I mean, you can, I'm not great at reading plans, obviously, but it has, you know, good schematic drawings of the proposal and everything. So I would encourage you to reach out and get a copy of that. I'm sure we can find it and get you a copy.
All, all I'm saying is that this has been very unusual compared to a lot of the projects we've done over the years and that, and that it, it's kind of a work in process all the way through here. And I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable about it. So anyway, I'll be a no vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on resolution twenty twenty-ten?
Yes. Yes.
Go for it.
I didn't, am I supposed to raise my hand?
You're supposed to do whatever you'd like to do, Councilmember Saunders, to get my attention.
Well, when I first saw this on tonight's agenda, the first thing that crossed my mind, and I was just kind of waiting to see if anybody else said it, Councilmember Mosley said it. I'm concerned about operating expenses and maintenance costs that will be ongoing expenses for us, and I haven't heard what they're going to be. Now, I do know from past experience, primarily the indoor pool that we discussed at infinitum, the operating expenses is what really killed that deal. And I'm afraid anytime you get around water, you're getting into more maintenance and operating expenses and like an office building. So I'm, I'm a little shy about this right now until we get some of those numbers.
So, Mr. Saunders, if you don't mind, can I help explain some of that right now?
Sure.
So when we first, I say we, when Director Rayburn first started looking at a splash pad design, one of the things that they were looking at was going with a system that's similar to a swimming pool where it reuses the same water and treats the same water over and over. So it's, it's basically just like a swimming pool. The splash pad water would be recollected and then it would be treated and then reused. So there would be very little water cost with that. However, the cost of the splash pad was going to be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that setup. And so by switching to the system that, that he decided to switch with, it's a pass-through system, so we will literally be hooked up to central Arkansas water. And that's, that'll be the water supply. And then that eliminates the entire need for treating the water, having pumps. Pumps were going to be a large ongoing maintenance cost as well as chemicals and all of that. So I could make an argument that we're actually saving a lot of money. Well, we are. We knocked off a hundred and twenty thousand dollars off the price tag by going with a pass-through water system. And we're also not going to have the ongoing upkeep for pumps, filters, cleaning equipment and all of that. So in my mind, this is, this is saving, saving a lot of money.
Okay, good answer, and it's well accepted. I appreciate it. I feel better about it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Holt, did I see you had a question?
I've got one. Well, I don't have a question.
I'm, I was opposed to the seventy-five thousand dollars being voted on at budget time from the beginning. I feel like that this is a very inappropriate time to be planning on something that, that by the time it gets built, we don't know what kind of condition we're still going to be in. Our national situation is very, very iffy. So I, I believe that it would be okay if we tabled this for the time being and, 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 and don't, don't do anything other than just, you know, it's, it's good to think about it, but I don't believe that we should make any specific plans on it. I'm not going to be able to support this at this point. This is not good timing on our part. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Williams.
I think we're not voting on a splash pad tonight. We're just trying to move someone's donation into the splash pad budget that was allocated there, that was their intention for it to go there in the first place. So we're not actually voting on whether we're going to build a splash pad tonight or not. We're just moving fifty thousand dollars that someone gave, and it went to the wrong place, and we're just trying to move it to the right place. That's it, right? That's, this doesn't have anything to do with maintenance or building or plans or anything. This is just someone, do we know who this private donation came from, Chad?
Yes, ma'am. This is from the Ottenheimer, OTT, Ottenheimer Brothers Foundation. They're based here in Pulaski County.
And so they meant to write their check to a nonprofit, but they wrote their check to the city of Mammell, and we're just trying to move fifty thousand dollars from the city of Mammell's budget to the splash pad budget, right? Or from a revenue from, it's not a city revenue. It goes toward the splash pad because that was their intention, right?
Yes, that is, that is correct. So the splash pad, and so there's a lot of folks asking for information that I could get. I didn't know that we were debating the splash pad. The council has already approved that, and we could reopen that debate if the council would like and present all the information. I didn't come prepared with the annual upkeep of the splash pad.
Well, the point being, that's not even, that's not even what we're talking, what this resolution is for, right?
Correct. This resolution is a nonprofit donated money for a splash pad, and we've got that money in our general fund. And the question is now what we do with it. Maybe the city attorney knows what happens if we don't appropriate that money for the purpose for which it was donated. what happens if we don't appropriate that money for the purpose for which it was donated. But I pardon me?
I think we might have to return it if we're not going to use it for the purpose that for which it was donated.
Well, that would make sense, but that's, you know, for us to receive fifty thousand dollars, we need to put it where the where the it's intended to go. And I think that's trying to accomplish here.
I I think it would be perfectly appropriate just to leave it in that account until you guys, till all the donors have donated the money and then move it over at that point.
We have received all the donated funds. This is part of the process of moving the money over.
I believe Councilmember Tierney has his hand raised.
Uh, yeah, what I was going to ask, it's largely been answered now. I was going to be is do we have to give the money back if we don't use it the way it was intended? And it sounds like our our city attorney has answered that question. I did have another question, Noah, for Councilman Gardner, is when you were talking about pass through water. Uh, I I just got a threw me for a little bit of a loop. Is are we going to be paying for this water or how is that going to work?
Are we going to be, did you say banned?
No, peeing for this water that passes through. I mean, because nothing's free.
Right, no, that that's a question that Director Rayburn would have to answer. Yes, we will be paying for it, but it would be the way the splash pad is designed, it's not something that is constantly running. You have to actually go up and interact with each element. So when a child goes up to play with one of the elements, they have to physically press a button and turn that that feature on. And so this isn't constant water that's running all the time. This is something that is it's on demand. You go up and activate it and then do it that way.
This would be more like a sprinkler system than a swimming pool.
Yeah, yes. I mean, it's going to be hooked up to a water meter through Central Arkansas Water. Yes, sir.
Okay, that that is just my question. Thank you.
Right.
Outstanding. I did get a there was a question about the annual upkeep cost, and we're thinking it'll be five thousand to eight thousand dollars a year. And Mr. Rayburn, Director of Parks and Rec believes that's a quote high estimate.
But I would also, I would add to that, Mr. Mayor, with the five to eight thousand dollars in annual water cost, I think our cost would have been higher on the 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 pump system with all the chemicals and treatment and pump maintenance that we would have had to do. So this is by far a more cost effective option, and it's actually what most cities are doing. There, when you think about it, if you're at a splash pad, you don't want to be recycling a small pool of water over and over and over again. I wouldn't. So this is a much more economical system.
And it's cleaner.
Yes.
Got you. And again, just to 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 clarify, this resolution moves the money that was donated from the private donation line item, which we're showing as a revenue. And then to the expense or appropriating it over to the splash pad. So it's a it's a revenue neutral resolution. With that, I don't recall if there was a motion in second on this, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, there is a there is.
Oh, okay.
Outstanding. It sounds like we have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Oh, this is mostly again. Again, I'm I'm a no vote until I till I see see plans and I see dollars and cents and I see something in writing as to what it's going to cost each year. That's it.
Okay. Did was there anyone else? Councilmember Holt?
Yes, I when I read the the original resolution that that happened last year about this, this was to be a strictly a private donation affair. It was very specific. It was not supposed to be any part of the city funds or had the city was not to have anything to do with it. So now, as I say, the check was written, supposed to be written to a private fund, and it was written to the city. And now we're going to move it from here and now we're going to put it in the city budget. And all of a sudden, we're sort of now we're sort of doing it. So we moved from a private donation affair to a city affair. And and that is not the way it was intended to be. And I remember that Councilmember Saunders was very specific about that. So I I have no choice but to vote to say no at this. I don't think this is the right time to even be having anything at all to be doing with this, that we have other needs that we need to be paying attention to. And this is, for me, it's too frivolous. I can't I can't vote for it.
Thank you, sir. And just for clarity sake, the the city council changed that in December when it passed the budget resolution appropriating the the money that's already been appropriated, which is not what we're talking about today. Last call any further discussion on Resolution twenty twenty dash ten? I don't think I see any. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
I'll tell you.
Councilmember Vapurzhan? That?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
The motion passes six to two to no votes.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, authorizing the fire department to complete specs for a fire engine. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution authorizing the Maumell Fire Department to complete the specifications for a new fire engine expected to be delivered in twenty twenty one.
Thank you. So first of all, let me let me get Chief Ezel moved in here. And while that's occurring, I'll give an overview of what this resolution is. This resolution was designed to serve as a signaling. I know when I was on the city council, I hated when there was a budget resolution that came up and you were expected to vote on it at that meeting. We have encountered issues with the the current truck apparatus that was supposed to be replaced next year. What the city council did was appropriate some money into the capital improvement fund in anticipation of adding the second half next year and placing the order then. These trucks can take up to a year, if not longer, to build them out once we come in, once they come in. But this truck has maintenance costs have gone up very high. And so we kind of wanted to come to the council and and seek your advice on this issue and signal that that the fire department would like to start building or specking it out and and possibly place an order. If the order was going to be placed this year, it would have to come back to the city council in the form of a budget resolution. I believe that would take somewhere between six to eight weeks just to spec it out. And then what I've talked to and Chief Ezel agrees is we need to kind of see what's going on with the financial situation before we do that. Chief, I think I may have said some of the stuff and stole some of your thunder. But would you like to explain what's going on here in the condition of the truck?
Sure. So the engine that we had talked about during the budget process has really, it's been out of service about two out of the last ten weeks with the same recurring issue. And it's an issue that the service center is having difficulty determining exactly what it is. We had one time where they tore it all the way down to the head. Thought maybe we had a head gasket problem, but we're getting water into the filters on the crankcase on this thing. It starts out with a flashing light. It's a coolant light starts flashing, but then it ends up going to an engine shutdown, which means you have to have them come to us to make sure we're even okay driving to the service center. And I will tell you that we have had in the last week or so, we started having that flash light coming on again, that low cool. So it's stepped up the process, you know, we would talk about wait till next year to order the next vehicle. All we're looking to do with this is to be able to complete specifications, nail down, you know, better pricing on this vehicle. And then, like the mayor was talking about, we'd have to bring it back to you anyway, but I would have definitive numbers, hopefully. At that time, but just just look at you guys. I mean, we all understand with everything going on, we we don't know what our future looks like for revenues. But hopefully, within sixty days, forty five to sixty days, we'll have a good idea of where tax revenue wise, so.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any discussion on this matter or questions for Chief?
Yeah, I've got a few questions here. What if if we are not obligating ourselves to do anything with this resolution, then why why are we having it? Why? Why wouldn't this just be kind of an early warning that we really need to try to try to do that? We just inform the council that we're preparing specifications. Why do we need to pass the resolution?
You don't. The resolute the resolution was simply here as a signaling. Also, if the council was determined to not order the truck this year regardless of the financial situation, it would save certain staff hours from having to go through and specking out and effectively virtually building the truck. So this was this was there for concerns that I had when I was on the council, Mr. Mosley, and concerns that I often hear from you and and folks like Councilmember Holt, that that no one likes to come in and get a council packet on a Thursday or Friday and then be asked to appropriate three hundred and ten thousand dollars on a Monday and that that's not enough time. So I wanted a written record that this is what we're looking at and that the the truck, the apparatus, isn't surviving the way that we had hoped it would throughout this year.
Okay, my my only concern here, if this is not some binding thing, is that we're giving a signal to the fire department that we're going to proceed, that we're kind of in effect promising to go ahead and do this. And I and I don't feel comfortable promising to go ahead and do that. I I hear Chief Ezel saying that saying that he knows that the times are not good. Maybe not a good time to to commit to this until another sixty days and then no more. But so I'm not really sure why we we really need to pass any kind of a resolution unless we're trying to promise somebody something which I really don't know that we need to do at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Was there any other discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
I was just going to ask, Mayor, yourself, Reeder, Chief Ezel, through the process of specking it out, would that apply to any future truck that we were going to purchase? If we were if we didn't do it at the end of the year or even next year, would that apply to the next engine we're wanting to buy anyway? So would it would it hurt to go ahead and spec it out?
Now, the the specifications would still work whenever we order the vehicle. Like I say, I just wanted to bring this forward to you in case. I mean, this engine right now, we're probably in the next week to two weeks, is probably going to end up going back to the shop for the same issue. I just wanted to bring this to you guys. Basically, just, you know, if we come up with the specs and tax revenues are flat, hey, I understand, we're not going to be able to do it at this time. But if we're if we're doing okay, I I may go ahead and ask permission to go ahead and order the vehicle. You're in no way, form am I asking for a promise from everybody tonight that you're going to give me that money to purchase the vehicle? Just want to spec it out and get a good idea of where we're at. I mean, you know, the cost of aluminum, the cost of steel goes up every single year. So I mean, it's it's one of those if things do pan out, we're able to order this, we're still saving by putting half the money down. And it gets that into us that much quicker.
Well, that was my next question. What's the payment process look like on an engine like this? What what's the normal standard? You put fifty percent down, then pay the other half whenever it's delivered in a year?
Well, when we bought the last engine that we bought, we paid all of it upfront a significant savings. If we paid half of it now, we would see about half, about a save, about twelve thousand.
Thank you.
Decision that you guys make.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Is there any way, Mayor or Chief Ezel, that we can get some idea of what this what the repair and maintenance costs is 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 that we're having right now on this this particular engine that we're talking about? What are we looking at as far as dollars?
We spent roughly a third of our maintenance budget for this year, about eleven thousand is about what we're into so far. But it's averaging about five thousand a repair right now.
We're also a third of the way through the year, so that would match what we budgeted in, wouldn't it?
Yes, but this is also a third of the fleet.
This is for, well, yeah, this is for one vehicle.
Less than a third of the fleet. And and there was there's a little bit more that that Chief Ezel told me, and that that was it had to do with, and and you may have said this earlier, as I'm trying to manage all the raised hands and and such, as to what the mechanics had said about the truck and that they were now taking measures that they wouldn't normally take just to get it back to us. Did you cover that?
Um, I did not. So, um, basically, what we're having, the the issue we're having is that we get a a high crankcase pressure, uh, which is when it does that, it gives us the shutdown warning on there, which means we need to shut the vehicle down and have somebody come in and take a look at it. That's happened to us twice. And like I say, the precursor to that has been the flashing low coolant light, which we're starting to have again. This last repair that was done, the the actual supervisor for the service center stated he doesn't like to use stop leak, but he used stop leak to try to, you know, make this thing stop leaking water into the filters along the crankcase. And he said, you know, we'll know fairly soon whether this works or not. And like I say, we've got that flashing light coming on again. So it's it's appearing at this point that that's not going to fix it.
Thank you. Was there any further discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, you you mentioned this would if we did not spec it out, that that would save some staff hours. Would those staff hours not already be budgeted into the fire department? Would it be somebody within the fire department that's just going to take their time to to spec the new engine out?
Correct. So there's no cost to approving this resolution. It was it was presented primarily, so if the council was regardless of our upcoming financial uncertainty, if the city council was opposed to it, then there wouldn't be much benefit to having the fire department spec it out, right? And so while it may carry over from year to year, so did the prices change, the availability changes. So my understanding is every time they they get a new truck, they go through the new process of specking it out again. And so I had originally just told Chief Ezel, just go ahead and spec it out and we'll see, you know, we'll take it to the council afterward. And then sort of through discussion and ended up saying, well, let's just take it to the council and see if they're even interested in this. And and just a reminder, and I I'm very cognizant of what Mr. Mosley said, maybe I I shouldn't have run it as this sort of resolution. But my my intent behind this was to give the council as much input early on and as much notice as possible that it was looking like we'd be asking for money to be that the council set aside for the fire truck to be used this year for the fire truck instead of waiting until next year. So I I although I I will, I cognizant of Mr. Mosley's concern, I'm now curious if the council denies an approval to spec out the fire engine. It it feels a little bit underhanded for me to come in behind the scenes and tell the chief to go ahead and do it anyway. So yeah.
If I may, I I have no problem at all with them going ahead and specking it out. I think that's a good idea. If they're going to have to do it sometime, we'll do it now. And if finances are good in two months, we'll proceed on. But yeah, just and if if we turn this down tonight, I think uh, yeah, just, and if, if we turn this down tonight, I think we ought to just make a motion here to, to ask them to go ahead and spec it out. Uh, I'll probably be voting no, but I, I'm happy for them to spec it out and kind of proceed on. And this, the first sentence, the first sentence down below bothers me. It says, "The city council hereby authorize the fire department to complete the specifications of a new fire apparatus to be constructed with an estimated completion during the 2021 calendar year." That just, that, that bothers me. It sounds like we're committing to do that. It's, it's a promise. And so that bothers me.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Tierney, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 202011.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tierney to adopt Resolution 2020-11. Is there a second on that? Last call. Is there a second on uh, a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-11?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Scott. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Councilmember Gardner?
Um, I, I kind of agree with what Mr. Mosley is saying. And would it, would it be more um, beneficial if we added uh, made a motion to amend this, that last paragraph? And uh, put something in there about, you know, where we're not necessarily giving them authorization to build one, but maybe just add some language to that last paragraph to add some flexibility?
I have an idea as well, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Vapurzyn?
I make a motion to table Resolution 2020-11. You just give authority to spec it out. That way, we're not agreeing to anything here on this paper.
I second that motion.
I agree.
We, it seems like we had a third and a fourth. Um, I don't have my Robert's Rules of Orders. Is that a?
Well, I agree too, so.
I, I think, don't we have to vote on the first motion first and decline that before we can vote on the second motion?
Agreed.
Not necessarily. Um, Madam City Attorney?
I think the motion to table is a privileged motion that takes precedence over the motion. Because you wouldn't, if you're going to table it, you wouldn't make a decision first. You just vote on the motion to table. Are we gonna table, is the motion to table it to a specific date, or is the motion to table it indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
I'll second that.
So we had a motion to table Resolution 2020-11 indefinitely that was seconded by Councilmember Mosley. Also, let me restate that motion. As I understood it, it was two parts. The first part to table Resolution 2020-11, and then second of all, asking the fire department to go ahead and spec it out anyways. Is that correct? Okay.
Giving you the authority to tell him to do so.
Thank you. Is there any uh, discussion on that motion, on Councilmember Vapurzyn's motion? I don't see any hands raised. Um, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Are we talking about tabling this motion?
The motion on the floor is a motion to table and authorizing the mayor to spec it out anyways.
Both. Okay, then I'll say yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, uh, and that concludes uh, Resolution 2020-11 and concludes new business.
Can I, can I comment?
On new biz, on, yes ma'am?
I just wanted to say that, you know, um, the council was approached by a citizen who takes a lot of interest in our budget. And I wanted to uh, just call out that we really, really appreciate that kind of input from people. It shows that they're paying attention and they keep up the city budget and they have uh, you know, good logical suggestions make, and uh, we do appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much. I think everyone got it. And I called that uh, resident as soon as I got the email. And as always, thanks, you know, him and encouraged everyone to be a watch guard um, uh, of your government, which moves us on to Mayor's comments in COVID-19. And that, there's a similar theme there. Um, that I, and I've had this conversation with multiple people. Uh, and I think that the time to be most uh, vigilant about what your governments are doing is in times of crisis. Uh, I think that that is the time that we want to um, uh, we want people to be watching what we're doing and what other governments are doing. Um, and so we, I want to segue that right into a discussion about how we thought this virtual meeting went. I think it went really well. I miss having the public be able to come to a meeting. We've provided means for them to submit written um, uh, comments that we didn't receive any. And so the balance there is, I think this meeting is actually probably, there's 32 people watching right now. There's probably more people watching this meeting than if it was held live. Um, but conversely, just because of the, the way the software works and uh, and us try not to be like so many of those organizations that have been hacked or have people crashing into Zoom, we've really locked it down and then broadcast it live on Facebook. So that's the, that's the counter, the, the, the counter problem. So I wanted to solicit feedback at this time right now as to whether we want to continue with this at the next meeting or go back to that uh, very social distanced uh, meeting. Open floor, please chime in.
I like this. I like it better than the other one. I can actually hear you and see you. The other one, uh, the acoustics were so awful in the gym. It was hard to understand what anybody was saying. I think this is a, this is quieter and it's uh, it's comfortable. And um, I, I, I appreciate your efforts to make this happen for us. I really do.
I agree.
I'm very pleased with the way that it went. It's much better than I expected. I am certainly the dinosaur in the room when it comes to technology, but it's going very, very well indeed. I will say that much of the conversation was so scrambled that it was inaudible. So there were parts of it that I, I just did not hear, could not understand. Actually, I voted, but had no idea what I was voting on in a way, other than the original motion. But anyway, I, I'm very pleased with it and I would, I, I'm excited about continuing it for the time being. I think it's a good idea. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for handling it as well as uh, as you made it happen.
Well, uh, all of you know that the, the, uh, it was Mr. Scott Grummer who handled a lot of it and uh, Communication Coordinator Rachel Hall, who helped us make sure that we could go live on Facebook. Um, uh, we can work on some of those sound issues. I've got a, a headset piece in so that I can hear directly there and we can work on trying to get something like that for your phones. Uh, I wanted to give a little bit of a COVID um, 19 update since the last city council meeting. The city hasn't taken any additional um, um, actions regarding restrictions. It's, it's been about the same uh, since y'all were there, uh, since the last council meeting. Um, it's been really interesting. As someone who's been watching, um, it, it seems like every press conference that's out there, especially those by the governor, governor and his staff, who I think have done a tremendous job. Uh, it, this last week has been encouraging, hearing folks talk about what's gonna happen uh, when we're sort of post-peak. Um, and so for a number of weeks, we were all following what's, what other restrictions are about to, to, to come on us. And now we're starting to look at what's gonna happen and how do we lessen things up. Um, uh, for those watching at home, what the city's restrictions are, as we've closed the playgrounds um, and basketball courts. The community center has been closed primarily under the governor's directive, uh, closing gyms. Uh, and then we've scaled back drastically at the, the um, senior center so that um, um, uh, we're, we're still doing essential communications uh, or essential transportations. Ken, I've got your name updated. Essential transportations, we're doing curbside uh, meals for um, for the cafe for seniors, and we continue to receive compliments. Uh, um, it seems like almost every day from seniors that appreciate having that essential transportation to get to the grocery store or um, the, the, that one nutritious meal for them. So if anyone has any questions uh, about COVID-19 and, and what's going on here in the city, I'm, I'm, we can open the floor to that if there's any questions, comments, or concerns.
I've, I've got one comment.
Yes, sir?
Uh, at our last meeting, uh, which I couldn't really hear very well, I, I think uh, Councilmember Williams suggested a, a sign of some kind there at Lake Willistee, and I could not understand what she was asking for, but I, after trying to walk through the last uh, couple of weeks, I, I'm in agreement with her. I think we need a, a, a sign. Uh, and if, if I'd, I'd open the floor first for Councilmember Williams if she wanted to reiterate what she was interested in. And then I'll tell what I'm interested in.
Well, we had a, a discussion from a, uh, it was a, an email that we got from a constituent that said that he, he wanted signage around. And I believe uh, um, Mayor Norris said that uh, signs were going up in heavily populated spots, right? And, and not out where it's, you know, all of the trails can't, you know, it's not, we can't put signs in all the trails, but all of those like Lake Willistee and uh, Lake Valencia, heavily populated parks where people enjoy being out during the day, there were uh, signs were going up that stressed um, social distancing. And I believe that's, that's the case, right? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the, so the signs that have gone up are dealing with the playgrounds um, and those areas, but not on the walking paths, which is I think what Mr. Mosley's asking about.
Probably so, probably so. And uh, but we didn't, we didn't get that far in the discussion. It's talking about the uh, walking paths. We were just talking about the playgrounds, I believe.
Now, what, what I would go ahead and suggest, I think, is that we just put, I think we could probably get by with just one sign and put it in probably the most heavily traveled part of the uh, Lake Willistee path. Uh, and just say something like "social distancing in effect." Uh, uh, "single file and six feet when passing," something like that, just, just so that people will uh, when they're, when they're walking the paths, will kind of yield and help everybody get around with six feet in uh, in, in clearance, because there, there was a lot of, a lot of new people walking the last couple of weeks. And a lot of people, I think, since they think they're outside, that it doesn't count anymore. So, so there was a lot of two abreast and three abreast and nobody kind of yielding at all and uh, people having to veer quite a ways off the path. So just it'd be more of a reminder, because I think everybody's really trying hard to, to do it right. But there's just, just a few that, that haven't quite got the, got the uh, memo, I guess.
I had a question. Uh, did we uh, remove the baskets uh, from all the basketball courts?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's one over here in uh, our, I was walking the trail here in Ward 3, and I noticed somebody else had probably put up their own basket with a on one of the courts. So that's kind of, that was a sitter, an individual.
Yeah. Um, so we are, and we just did city basketball courts. I'm not sure which one that was.
It's on the city trail.
Got you. Um, yeah. So we can, uh, Councilmember Mosley, do you have a suggested location for that sign?
Uh, yeah, right at the crosswalk, maybe where the uh, path crosses the uh, road as you come in. Uh, you kind of go around, there's a couple of turns there, and then you, you get to that before you get to the little bridge. I think that would be a good locale.
Okay. I'll pass that on to um, Mr. Rayburn. I talked with him about that after uh, receiving your email.
And you know, Caleb, also that path that goes, that's uh, just a little bit beyond, turn, you turn left past the uh, the, well, right about where Chad is standing, actually. There's a um, there's a trail right there that goes back into the woods that uh, I think probably could use a sign. It's, it's heavily trafficked too.
Got you. We, we can get out signs to remind people, but uh, if, if there's people walking around Lake Willistee that haven't heard about social distancing, then I'd like to, I, I'd say I'd like to meet them and shake their hand, but that would, that would not be right. Uh, um, Mr. Tierney, I did receive a text message from Mr. Rayburn, who says the basketball court that you're referring to is not a city basketball court. And so we're not, we're not going down and taking down private ones or closing those parks. And we haven't closed any parks uh, uh, and don't have any plans on it. Um, um, so a, any further discussion questions uh, about that?
The, the signs could be banners, you know, made by uh, public works. And there could be one when you drive into the park and just say, "This city observes social distancing."
That's true. That's true. I agree with that.
Or even something on the highway coming into town. "This city observes social dis-"
Okay.
Just a thought.
Another issue that someone brought to my attention is the people who fish on the bridges, particularly the suspended bridge, the main one. Um, if people are fishing off those bridges, it's impossible to social distance, because you can't get past them unless you're within six feet. So, and it might be also an idea to post a sign that no fishing is allowed on those bridges temporarily.
Very good idea.
Are you, are you, you're talking about the walking bridge?
The rope bridge.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Well, it's not a rope. What is it? It's like, it's, it's like a suspension type bridge. I, I don't know. The main one. It moves when you walk on it. Right.
Mr. Rayburn, I believe, is watching this, and I'm sure he's taking very good notes on these things. I'm afraid to ask if there's any uh, uh, additional questions or comments, um, but I will continue to do that. All right. Uh, uh, one other comment that, whoa.
Yeah, I hit my raise my hand button, but anyway. No, I would like to say one thing. I don't have a problem with putting up signs that suggest people do these things. But I don't, but I would like to see it phrased in such a way that it is pretty obvious it's suggestion. I don't want to be like New York City and some of these places in Michigan where we're sending out the cops after you if you, if you're not wearing a face mask. I don't think that's the personality of my male that I want.
Correct. I think there's a lot of folks that don't necessarily want that um, uh, mentality. In fact, so let me talk, I, I've received some comments about removing the basketball uh, rims. Uh, and those who know have heard me talk about some of those. Uh, one of the reasons that we did that was so that um, because we were getting reports of, of large groups of people playing at some of the basketball courts. And the last thing that I want to do is task the police department with going up and breaking up these things or enforcing the governor's directives, which are enforceable. Um, and uh, the, the, the burden of enforcement has been placed on localities. And so in removing the nets, the goal was to remove the incentive on those public places, which I think is a much less coercive uh, way of doing that than telling an armed police officer to go over and break up a a, a basketball game of kids. I don't want kids growing up thinking of the, the cops that way. If, if I need to be the bad guy for, on city property, then so be it. But um, I just wanted to reiterate that. Um, I think I've pointed that out before. Uh, little did we know that the last time we met in the city council chambers would be the last time that we met in the city council chambers ever. Uh, we anticipate um, uh, moving from the back part of City Hall into the front part of City Hall as early as next Monday. Um, it is really coming along up there. Um, I, I've got some pictures. Maybe I should have made them so I could share them with y'all. Uh, but so that part of the remodel, we're about to move into phase two. Next week will be crazy, uh, as we're relocating basically every office here at City Hall. Uh, we've received the final plans for uh, Crystal Hill. Um, we've passed them on to the city engineer who's doing some review. We anticipate having a meeting with the um, um, engineers that uh, worked on that, and then hopefully getting that out to bid here soon in the, the next coming weeks. Uh, and we think that'll happen. Councilmember Saunders, you'll be happy to know I received an email from the city engineer today uh, with an, a proposed uh, alternate- with an a proposed alternate, with a proposal, an alternate proposal for Club Manor in Odom South. I haven't opened that yet. But I'm hoping to be able to send that out to y'all or include it in the next council packet. I haven't seen it, so just wanted to give you all a heads up on that.
Very good.
I also wanted to take a moment and thank so many city staff. This has been a crazy period of time. It has been really abnormal and unusual. And I think that they've been doing an amazing job. We're dealing with tons of new regulations coming out. And the city attorney could attest to that. And I know that her and HR have been trying to follow that and make sure we're taking care of our employees and following the law. We've got police and fire chiefs and their officers and firefighters out there doing an amazing job. It's just really been neat to see so many different folks stepping up and doing what they need to do at this time. And so my goal is to eventually name them all and and go through that. But I just wanted to share with y'all that encouraging, what I'm seeing with the boots on the floor here. With that, I will stop talking, at least momentarily, and we will move on to councilmember comments. Councilmember Gardner?
You kind of beat me to it. One question that I had was on Crystal Hill. I had a property owner ask what the timeline was on that. I know Central Arkansas Water was doing some relocations. And can you kind of give an update on where the timeline is with Central Arkansas Water finishing their piece? And then when we might begin?
We will begin when they are finished, hopefully as soon as they're finished. I haven't reached out to them recently. I think Mr. Grummer, who I am moving in to be a panelist, we were discussing it. He, I think he was out there today looking at that. Scott, did I catch you off guard? You're muted. I've unmuted you. No, I haven't. Anyways, we can get you that, are you there, Scott?
I'm here. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question. I was working. What was the question?
It had to do with the status of Crystal Hill. You were out there earlier today looking at what C A W was doing with the water main relocation.
So it looks like they've, they have put in the majority of their mains along Crystal Hill Road. It looks like that they are, and they've done some work going up Count Massey. I didn't see any work happening today, but I planned on following up tomorrow to find out about what their timing is to finish up. It looks like they've got, they're pretty close to finishing the, we, the ground is still pretty torn up. And I know that they typically consolidate most of their repairs together once they get all their installed on.
But the goal, if with the project going out to bid, is if it, if if the plans are looking good, and we've got basically 100% plans from the engineer, the that designed or redesigned the road, the city engineer is reviewing them. I had a discussion with him today. And I think we've got a meeting to be scheduled with the project engineers to go over it, just to answer a few questions. If everything's good to go, we're we're a week or two out to putting out bids. And that'll be open for, I I forget exactly how long that'll take. I believe it's three weeks, maybe the city clerk knows better than me. But so we're we're looking at being able to issue a notice to proceed pretty quick. I've got a hand up from councilmember Mosley.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank you and your staff and everybody associated with City Hall, Scott Grummer, Ms. Krebs and everybody for for managing to keep on going through this COVID thing here. It's just been quite an inconvenience, but we've managed to keep it going. And I agree with everything you've been doing as far as the COVID thing. And just wanted to thank you so much for for staying the course and you didn't, you didn't sign on for this deal. So appreciate, appreciate your patience and your tenacity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 2019, we, it seemed like we spent weeks waiting for a flood that didn't cause too much damage. I'd take that over 2020. If 2021, if we're getting worse, I I may call someone and volunteer that they take over this job. But no, is there any additional city council member comments? Councilmember Vaprazan?
Wanted to thank Phil Rayburn and Mike Hogan, both of those men, when there's an issue that arises, whether it's a fallen tree branch or something on the street. When I contact those guys, both of them contact me immediately. And I'm very impressed with both of them and how they respond so quickly to the needs of the people in our city. And we are very fortunate to have them. And we're going to be very sad to see Shannon go.
Thank you, sir. I don't think I see any additional hands up. Wave councilmember comments, not seeing any. All right, we'll move on to city attorney comments. Madam City Attorney?
No comments.
I know this has been a very peaceful and mundane last, you know, six weeks for you, right?
Just a few changes.
Yeah, a few changes. Thank you for what you're doing too. Madam City Clerk?
Just remember to, if you haven't already, fill out your 2020 census. We're all at home a lot more, so there's no excuse.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Timmons, for what you're doing. By the way, this is a competition now. It's on with Census. Mamel's ranked number five in the state with self-reporting. If we get another 4% of the population to self-report, we'll be in first place and we'll be the city in the state that has the highest self-reporting out there. So please, if you haven't filled out your census, go ahead and do it. And encourage your friends, neighbors and the whole nine yards. I think Ms. Hall may have something fun to help you encourage your neighbors to fill out that census. You'll just have to stay tuned for that. With that, I think we're done. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
We had a motion and from councilmember Holt in the second, from councilmember Vaprazan. I will not require a roll call vote. So all those in favor of adjourning the city's first ever livestream meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone who would like to continue on, say no. None. The meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Good job.